Ready, Madam Chair?
Thank you, thank you. Good morning, everybody, good morning. I'd like to call the appropriations and public health, public hearings today to order-
Me ma'am, human services.
I mean, you see, human services, what did I say? Public health, uh, pu- uh, human services, um, public hearing today on the CHCP waiver renewal application. And I think I've got, uh, some of the chairs here today with us. Senator Lesser, good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, good to see you. Uh, we, we are looking forward to this morning's, uh, hearing and meeting. Uh, I did hear, uh, from a number of members that have, uh, some pretty compelling reasons why they can't be here today, uh, and wanted to express their regrets. Uh, some are, uh, undergoing medical procedures, others are, uh, caught in travel difficulties, uh, but, um, a lot of folks are here and just, uh, looking forward to this morning's-
Great, um, okay, I'm, I'm, my screen changed and I'm not sure what other legislators are on here as you're ranking on, uh, Senator Lesser, do you know?
That's a good question, I'm taking-
I'm sorry. There we go, okay. There's a lot of-
No, thank you very much, and, and, um, you know, we, we've been through this process before, um, and again, you know, to Senator Lesser's point, it's a tough time of year for folks, um, but, uh, eager to get the ball moving down the field here.
Thank you, thank you so much, thank you, everybody. For appropriations, let's see, do I see any of my, let's see-
I'm here, Tony.
Tammy?
I'm here.
Hi, so good morning, Tammy, good morning. Um, good to see you and I hope all is well. Uh, do you have any comments or any statements?
No, not today, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, it's 10 o'clock in the morning, yeah. Okay.
It's been a really crappy week for the world right now, so, you know, it's a little-
Yeah, it adds, it is, we're, we're, well, it's, we've been having some very difficult weeks lately and, um, so today we have some business. Um, today we are first going to start, uh, with, um, Bill Halsey, uh, William Halsey from DSS. Mr. Halsey, are you here with us?
I am, good morning.
Good morning, sir, good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for joining us. Um, would you like to introduce your team and then present the, um, the information for day for the waiver? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So, good morning, Chairs Austin, Walker, Lesser, and Gilchrist, ranking members Summers, Nuccio, Case, Perillo, and distinguished members of the Human Services and Appropriations Committee. I'm William Halsey, Medicaid Director at the Department of Social Services. I'm here today to present the five-year waiver renewal for the Home and Community-Based Service Waiver for Elders, traditionally referred to as the Connecticut Home Care Program for Elderly, or CHCP. CMS requires each 1915(c) waiver to be renewed every five years. This renewal does not make substantive changes to the existing program. CHCP waiver currently serves over 15,000 older adults that are at risk of institutionalization without enhanced services and supports. Supports vary from Adult Day Health, to Personal Care Assistance, to Meals on Wheels. I am joined by Christine Weston, she's the Director of Community Options at the Department of Social Services, which oversees the waiver program. We have a very short slide deck to enhance this presentation, if you'd like to see that as well, and then we'd be happy to take any questions, and we're hoping for your support to submit this waiver to CMS.
Thank you, sir, and we would love to see your very short slide deck. Thank you.
Hello, good morning, I'm Christine Weston, um, and as Director Halsey said, I am the Director of Community Options at the Department of Social Services. Um, this is our brief slide deck on the waiver, you can go to the next slide, the Home and Community-Based Services Waiver for Elders. Okay. I think it's a P, is, oh my, PDF, you might have to go down, sorry. Okay. So, uh, this is a very longstanding program in Connecticut, it's been operational since 1987, serving Connecticut residents that are 65 years of age and over. Um, this is a five-year renewal, so as we said, every five years, regardless of when the last amendment was even done, um, we have to come back and get a five-year renewal. Um, right now, we're a little delayed, um, the Home and Community-Based waiver technically expired in Ju- on June 30th, um, but we're operating under a temporary extension, um, through CMS to help ensure that there was no disruption to program participants or providers, so we have full coverage, we just need to submit this one to be able to get the next five-year renewal through. Um, this renewal does not include any substantive changes, as we said, and will replicate the amendment that was just approved on May 8th of this year, so that's why there was a delay in us submitting the renewal, because we had an amendment outstanding with CMS and you can't have them running at the same time. Next slide. So this is just some background on the waiver, um, you know, are the Connecticut general statutes that identify the, the purpose and scope of the waiver. It's for older adults, as we said, 65 years of age and over, who are at risk of nursing home placement. Um, it encourages individuals to remain at home in their communities while receiving the supports and services that they need. There's a really robust waiver service package that's available to individuals that are eligible. We have Adult Day Health, um, Case Management, Homemaker Services, PCA Services, uh, Respite for Family Caregivers, Adult Family Living, Assisted Living, Sister Technology, Bill Payer, um, and the list goes on, so, um, I can ha- that's the presentation, so, um, I think there might be a duplicate slide, oh, I'm sorry, that is not the presentation, sorry, go, there was a duplicate slide, one more, so, we did receive public comment, so we are required by CMS to post all waiver renewals and amendments for 30 days for public comment. This allows, um, providers, family members, or key stakeholders and advocates to present comment on our, our recommendation to go forth to CMS. Um, we received one comment, um, from, um, a Home and Community-Based Service Provider named Careforth, um, we've submitted that comment, I believe, uh, to you as well. The comment requested revisions to a particular service that's called Adult Family Living. Um, this is a, a newer service in the waiver, but is the fastest-growing service right now, we have 4,500 members that are accessing Adult Family Living, and Careforth's suggestions were, um, we've received them, but we did not make any of the recommendations that they put forth, because the entire service is going to be going through a review. Um, because it is the fastest-growing service, we have new providers onboarding every couple of months, and hundreds of members, um, onboarding onto this service, that DSS really needs to kind of do a deep dive into the service, make sure we have all of the safeguards, the quality measures, and, um, oversight for this service. So we'll be holding focus groups with providers and members, as well as consulting with other states that offer this, to kind of shore up the service definition. When we launched it, it, um, it has some vagueness and some room for interpretation, so we owe a really deep dive to reimagine the service, and we'll be using Careforth's suggestions, and they'll be at the table when we hold the focus groups to provide direct feedback.
Is, I'm sorry, is that the last of your slide decks?
Sorry, yes, now that's the last slide, I apologize.
We like brevity, we, we, we appreciate that, thank you very much. I'm just gonna ask a couple of questions, so, um, so in, you said that there are no substantive changes? Okay, no substantive is one thing, but are there changes in here that would change the delivery of the, of the services that are covered under this waiver?
No, there are not.
So everything is basically staying the same, and that would-
Yes.
That'd be fun, okay, that, that's true, and, um, you also talked about the fact that you are in the process of review, and you said that that's gonna happen soon. But will that review be able to be covered if, if you can find substantive things that need to be changed under this review? Can that, can that be adjusted before the five-year process is completed?
No, so unfortunately, when we first looked at adjusting the Adult Family Living service, we realized that there is going to be a tremendous amount of kind of time and effort to really do the revamp justice, so we wanted to make sure we met the CMS obligation and the five-year renewal by putting forward a no-change essential renewal, and then we'll come back to this committee with an amendment after we've done our kind of due diligence, meeting with the providers, meeting with the members and the family members, to really determine how we want to adjust the service.
I'm sorry, I- Could you guys mute yourselves, please? Okay, I'm sorry, um, could you, could you just-
Sure, I'll repeat that, sorry, yes, so, we, all of that work to revamp Adult Family Living, with holding the focus groups and reevaluating the service, will be after this renewal, it'll come through as an amendment. We don't have enough time, due to the fact that we're under temporary extension, and we needed to kind of meet the CMS obligation of that administrative five-year approval, we're submitting the wa- we're asking for permission to submit the waiver as-is, knowing that we will likely have to come back in a few months, maybe more than a few, but a, a few months to then do an amendment to this waiver.
Okay, okay, that, so we will be able to do an amendment to this?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, all right, I, that was, that was a concern that I had. Uh, Senator Austin, are, are you, um, ready with your questions, or are you good?
Representative, um, Senator Austin is signing in right now, this is Tim Ecker.
Oh, hi, Tim, hi, Tim. Thank you, Tim.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from any members, uh, while, while, uh, before, yes, okay. Tim, since you are so cooperative and helping Kathy-
Thank you, thank you, Representative, appreciate that, Madam Chair, just a question, so this is, when I was reviewing the application, there's a three-year box of checkoff and a five-year box of checkoff, uh, in the application, so this is a five-year renewal?
That's correct.
Okay, what is the difference between why would be a three and a five, is it, that was just what I was wondering, why, so this is good for five years, then?
That's correct, yeah, I, I don't have the background answer why it's three or five, I'm sure that's probably around states' prerogatives would be my consider- we've always done five years since inception.
That's what I was wondering, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Representative Nolan, I saw your handles up.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Thank you, um, and actually, I was gonna ask the same question that my colleague asked there, but, um, in regards to your focus groups, um, how soon, or when do we get dates and times, uh, and locations, or can we request locations for the focus group, that you were talking about earlier?
Sure, so what we're currently doing right now is the department is conducting their research amongst other states and getting technical assistance from CMS, to then be able to present at least a structure and a shell for individuals to react to. We had decided we're gonna come up with an internal proposal and then be able to present to providers, family members, and advocates, kind of how do you see this working, where are your concerns? So we're still in that process, so I think it's gonna take us a few more months, and I would say early '26 is when you'll start seeing those focus groups post. Um, we have mechanisms to reach, uh, family members through case managers, we can do targeted outreach to individuals receiving the service, and we'll use provider bulletins or important messages through our Medicaid, um, MMIS system that goes directly to providers, to let them know about the opportunity to provide feedback.
Okay, in regards to your targeted outreach, would you come out and do targeted outreach just for a community, at the senior center or something like that?
We're prob- well, we're open to however it would be best to reach the members, yes, if that's a recommendation, we could do that.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank, thank you, sir, um, are there any other questions?
Tony, uh, Senator Lesser and Representative Hughes have their hands up.
Okay, Senator Lesser?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and, uh, thank you, Senator Austin. Um, just a question, uh, well, first question, I got two questions, first question is about HR1, uh, I know that HR1 is something that the department is spending an awful lot of time digesting, but it seems to make some legislative changes that apply to waiver programs, and I'm curious, you know, just for starters, it would seem that, like, folks who are survivors of, uh, trafficking or of domestic violence, uh, would not be eligible for services under the waiver, um, going forward, are there other changes, uh, that, that HR1 have impacted, that will impact the census, or the program in any way that you can describe today, and does that affect, you know, wha- what should we be thinking about in relation to that?
Thank you, Senator Lesser, I'm looking here at Christine, trying to think about HR implications and the impact to waiver recipients, and I don't, I don't think we're thinking that it's going to impact waiver recipients, but we'd be happy to take that back and review it, but my first reaction is, I don't think it's going to impact the individuals receiving services under this waiver.
Well, I thought, uh, uh, this isn't a question, but I had, my understanding was that the restrictions on who is eligible to receive services under Medicaid, uh, applied across the board, including to waiver programs, and so that that would make certain, I don't know that there are large numbers, but it would certainly apply to individuals who could be receiving services under the waiver, but, uh, it's possible that I'm in, correct on that. My second question was about, uh, rates under the waiver, and I think, um, I remember us adjusting rates for Meals on Wheels previously, in part to account for a loss of federal funding under the Old Americans Act, and we just wanted to make sure that we can make adjustments either to that, or to the Med and Min rate, or other areas outside of this renewal process.
So there is a rate increase, um, slated for 1126 that we got in this, um, in the last budget, for, um, what we're calling low-wage workers on the waiver program, so, um, due to the increase in minimum wage, there's a number of individual, um, procedure codes on, on all of our waivers, on all the 1915(c) programs, that are considered, um, might be making minimum wage or slightly above, so we are applying a 4.9% increase to those procedure codes, so that the providers then can, um, raise those, uh, wages for those workers without a Medicaid reimbursement gap. Um, as for, I think, Senator Lesser, can you repeat the first part of the question? Oh, the Med and Min, that's not a waiver service, that's a state plan service, so that wouldn't be addressed by this waiver.
That's within our home health benefit, outside of the waiver.
And if, but if we wanted to increase a rate next year, we would be able to do that, like, that is a thing we could do through the appropriations process, or through an amended waiver, we are not, we're not locked in right now to specific rates?
No, we are not.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, um, Representative Hughes?
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, thank you for this, and some of my questions echoed Senator Lesser, but, um, can you go back to that, uh, I, I thought I recalled in human services, looking at the environmental accessibility portion of this waiver, and did that service drop, or did we, um, experience not, uh, you know, a, a robust usage of that part of the waiver? I, I am concerned that we're not fully, uh, accessing all of the services, can you, Christine, talk to, talk to me about that?
Sure, um, I don't have the direct trend of the environmental accessibility, um, spend, but we can certainly look at that for you, um, it is, it remains a waiver service, and, and people are eligible, this is usually used for, um, threshold ramps, small ramps, um, you know, for a few steps outside their home, uh, grab bars, um, potentially widening a doorway if someone's become, uh, you know, using their wheelchair and needs to move around their home. I have not noticed, um, a, a decrease in requests for the service, the waiver itself hasn't changed the service, um, but I can look at the trends over time if people are not requesting the service as much.
I'm just creating some awareness that that's part of it, and, and can be a crucial part, especially in minimizing hospitalizations and fall risks, so I'd love to see us, um, you know, communicate more robustly to our waiver members to utilize that, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Representative Nuccio.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, can you actually, can, can we talk a little bit about that? Again, I agree with Representative Hughes, I've had a lot of people talk to me about the fact that they have a hard time staying in their home, because they don't have a ramp, you know, to get from their home to the road, when they need to go for dialysis, or, you know, they have a problem with, uh, mobilization around their room, uh, with wheelchairs or stuff, how does one go about getting, because you said you see a drop-off, and I just kind of find that, I actually see an uptick in it, in my area, but I, where does somebody go, how do we, how do they work on this list?
So if they are currently on the Connecticut Home Care Program for Elders, they can contact their case manager for a status review, when typically will, um, because that's when you have to kind of, that's how you adjust a care plan, and you add services, or you take away services, or add different services based on need. We would have a PT or an OT home evaluation, so we would get someone who's trained to determine accessibility needs of an individual to come into the home and kind of spec out the work, and then it would be submitted to the office, um, with, where our clinicians and our team review and authorize the funding for the environmental adaptations. So, um, individuals should be made aware of this at, at minimum at their annual reassessment, and if they contact their case managers, or have their kind of routine check-ins, and they're saying, "Oh, I'm having difficulty getting in," the case managers know to be prompted to say, "Hey, do we need a home evaluation, how are things going?" And then they can put through the request for the funding, so it's part of the ongoing care planning process, and the ongoing case management oversight by our access agencies, so if you have constituents that are on the program, they should be contacting their assigned case manager.
And how, what if they're not, like, on that program, how do they get on that program?
So, um, I could provide our, our links to our applications, we have, um, a direct line where you could call in, and a, an RN from the Department of Social Services will take your application over the phone, we have an online version and a paper version, so you can kind of meet us any which way people prefer to apply for services, so I can provide that as follow-up, um.
I appreciate that, um, and is there a waitlist for these services?
So, the Connecticut Home Care Program for Elders does not have a waitlist currently, it is, uh, one of our programs that you can apply for, um, we do a functional and financial assessment, that there might be a, um, a length of time for those two events to occur, for you to be, um, functionally found eligible, and then financially found eligible, because a lot of individuals, um, when they're applying for a home care program for elders, it's, it's actually their first time, their first interaction with Medicaid, so they also have the Medicaid application that they have to go through if they're found functionally eligible. So there might be a delay in access to services, but there's no wait for you to kind of be met on a waitlist for this program.
Okay, um, this is, this is really good information, and, um, I'd like to be able to share this with constituents, because as I mentioned, you know, I actually see this quite a bit, I hear it quite a bit, you know, I want to stay in my home, but I've got all these limitations, so, um, if you could please share that information as, as quickly as possible, um, I'd really like to get it out to constituents, because, uh, I feel like this is definitely something that, uh, needs to be addressed within the community, and I, I thank you for the information and for your time.
Of course.
Thank you, ma'am, um, Representative Messgers.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't sure whether I was still muted, thank you, Tony, I appreciate that. I want to reemphasize what Representative Nuccio said, I think there's gonna be a whole host of people whose engagement with the state has been of limited, uh, nature, who are facing these financial difficulties, and are not familiar with either the application process of Medicaid, they've been either struggling, using, using local assistance, food pantries, et cetera, where now with the mobility issue, this is essential, I see, so, I encourage you, I'd love to get this out, um, and I'd recommend that we put it out through our respective House caucuses, the Democrats and Republicans, everyone's got, I, I keep on trying to emphasize to our agency, that all of the elected representatives are shamelessly promoting themselves in E-blasts, every week, with events and communication, so it's a great location for us to promote this to them, so I encourage you to put that link out to us, because I'd love to go out with that, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, and, um, Bill, uh, Mr. Halsey, is this, is this something that we can, um, expect that you guys will be able to fulfill, um, maybe within the next few weeks or so?
Yes, yes, absolutely, we're actually in the process of creating, um, we call these one-sheets for programs, for people to have ease of use of understanding exactly kind of like what we can offer, what it looks like in the home, and then a direct access to how to apply, so we'll provide you that PDF information, as well as links to the different mechanisms for applying, um, if people prefer phone or online, so we'll, we'll make sure that that gets pulled together for you and, and sent over.
Okay, great, well, um, please, would you please make sure you send it to Madam Administrator, she can make sure that gets, it gets distributed to the appropriate, um, locations, so, thank you. Are there any other questions, I don't see any more hands up, um, are there any more questions from anybody? It's good to hear that there's not a waitlist, I like that. Anything else? No?
Madam Chair.
Is, there's a question?
Yes.
I, I, I don't see a hand, so could some-
Representative Martinez?
Representative Martinez.
Representative Martinez, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to ask, um, I know you were saying that you're not releasing effects of HR1 now, but I was curious how you think it will affect, um, the wait times of people getting on services with having to, uh, reapply for Medicaid, uh, twice a year versus the once a year, and how that will impact, uh, you know, uh, social work and services.
Kind of separate and distinct from this waiver?
Yeah.
So, we are evaluating that right now, I've been in a couple of public meetings this week, and explaining that we're doing an evaluation of what kind of system and kind of IT upgrades we need to do to improve, uh, our ability to draw down information or data related to members, whether they're working, or whether they're in school, or whether they're doing community service, so we're, we're evaluating kind of an IT systems upgrade, but then at the same time, we're also evaluating, along with that, if we need additional staff at DSS, and what does that number look like, so that's, we're evaluating that as we speak, like, right now.
Thank you so much, I was, um, curious, because it was said that, uh, a lot of people that are applying for this waiver are, uh, reaching out to Medicaid for the first time, so I figured this might be a pocket that it would really impact, thank you.
Good point.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Representative, I think, uh, we are going to have a lot of, um, communications going on as things evolve, because that's the only way our constituents find this information out, especially. Are there any other questions? Any other questions? Well, with that, I will close this public hearing for the Connecticut Home Care Program for Elders, and, uh, and we will then, we will then break, are we, are we taking a break, or can we go right into the-
Oh, we're not taking a break, Madam Chair.
Good.
No breaks, we're going right into the meeting.
All right, then, Senator Lesser, are you ready to go? Ready to go, go right ahead.
Ready, ready to rumble, so, um, Madam Chair, I'd like to, well, I, I would like to, at this point, call, uh, to order the, uh, September 11th, uh, 2025 meeting of the Human Services Committee, um, and at this point, I will entertain a motion and a second to approve the Connecticut Home Care Program for the Elders renewal application.
So, move, Representative-
Second, Senator Anwar.
Uh, motion by, uh, Representative Dathan, seconded by Senator Anwar, is there discussion? Seeing no discussion, uh, I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Representative Gilchrist.
Representative Gilchrist votes yes.
Senator Lesser.
Senator Lesser votes yes.
Representative Case. Senator Perillo.
Perillo votes yes.
Representative Comey. Senator Mar.
Senator Mar votes yes.
Senator Anwar.
Senator Anwar votes yes.
Representative Butler.
Representative Butler votes yes.
Representative Dathan.
Representative Dathan votes yes.
Representative D'Amico.
Rep. D'Amico votes yes.
Representative Fortier.
Representative Fortier votes yes.
Senator Gaston.
Gaston votes yes.
Representative Hughes.
Representative Hughes votes yes.
Representative Johnson. Representative Kitt.
Representative Kitt votes yes.
Representative Master Francesco. Representative Messgers.
Representative Messgers votes yes.
Representative Pezudo.
Representative Pezudo votes yes.
Representative Santiago.
Santiago votes yes.
Representative Scott.
Representative Scott votes yes.
Representative Sheikh.
Representative Sheikh votes yes.
Representative Stewart. And Representative Vale. Are there any remaining who wish to cast their vote? All right, roll call is complete.
Uh, the clerk will please announce the tally.
The tally is 17, yay, six absent.
Motion passes, um, at this point, I'd like to recess the meaning of the Human Services Committee.
Thank you, sir, uh, at this point, I'd like to call the Appropriations Committee to order, may I have a motion to the Connecticut Home Care Program for Elders waiver?
So moved.
Moved, seconded by Representative Dathan.
Okay, it was moved by Senator Lesser, and- If not, Madam Administrator, would you like to call the roll?
Senator Austin. Senator Austin votes in the affirmative. Representative Walker.
Representative Walker votes yes.
Senator Hartley. Senator Kushner.
Senator Kushner votes yes.
Representative Exum.
Representative Exum votes yes.
Representative Paris. Senator Summers.
Summers votes yes.
Representative Newtio.
Sorry, hold on, Representative Newtio votes yes.
Gotcha. Representative Ackert.
Ackert votes yes.
Senator Anwar.
Senator Anwar votes yes.
Representative Baker.
Representative Baker votes yes.
Representative Belton. Senator Verthel. Representative Valinsky.
Representative Valinsky votes yes.
Representative Brown.
Representative Brown votes yes.
Representative Candelaria. Representative Corpus.
Representative Corpus votes yes.
Representative Nathan.
Representative Nathan votes yes.
Representative DiCaprio.
DiCaprio votes yes.
Representative DeFranzo. Representative Delaney.
Representative Delaney votes yes.
Representative DeFranzo, are you with us?
Yes, DeFranzo is a yes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Representative Dillon.
Representative Dillon votes yes.
Representative Felipe. Senator Flexer. Representative Fonsello.
Fonsello votes yes.
Representative Garabey.
Garabey votes yes.
Representative Gibson.
Representative Gibson votes yes.
Representative Gilchrist.
Representative Gilchrist votes yes.
Representative Gonzalez. Senator Gordon.
Senator Gordon votes yes.
Representative Hadad.
Representative Hadad votes yes.
Senator Harding.
Senator Harding votes yes.
Representative Hoxa. Representative Johnson. Representative Cavros de Grau.
Cavros de Grau votes yes.
Representative Kennedy.
Kennedy votes yes.
Representative Khan. Representative Leeper.
Representative Leeper votes yes.
Senator Lesser.
Senator Lesser votes yes.
Representative Martinez.
Representative Martinez votes yes.
Senator Marks. Representative McCarthy Vehi. Senator McCrory.
Senator McCrory votes yes.
Representative Nolan.
Nolan in the affirmative.
Representative Pavlock Damato.
Pavlock Damato votes yes.
Representative Freyas. Representative Rosario. Representative Ryan. Representatives Manny Sanchez.
Representative Manny Sanchez votes yes.
Representative James Sanchez.
Representative James Sanchez votes yes.
Representative Sims. Senator Slapp.
Senator Slapp votes yes.
Senator Winfield.
Senator Winfield in the affirmative.
Senator Verthel.
Good morning, Madam Administrator. Senator Verthel votes in the affirmative.
Good morning, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Representative Felipe.
Representative Felipe votes yes.
Are there? Representative Rosario.
Representative Rosario in the affirmative.
Thank you, sir. Representative McCarthy Vehi.
Wait a minute.
Representative McCarthy Vehi votes yes.
Are there any other members of the Appropriations Committee who have not yet voted who would like to do so at this time? Ah, good morning, Representative Belton. How would you like to vote, Madam?
I would like to vote yes.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Whenever you're ready, Madam Administrator, please let us know the tally.
Total number voting 41, those voting a 41, those voting nay zero, those abstaining zero, those absent not voting 12.
Thank you, ma'am. The motion passes. At this point, I'd like to have asked for a motion to for appropriations to adjourn. Anybody saying?
Oh, you got lots of folks in the room saying yes and you got second, first, ninth. You're good.
Okay, we're good. Thank you. Appropriations has adjourned.
Good morning. I'd like to reconvene the Human Services Committee and at this point, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Representative Nathan?
Motion by Representative Nathan. Second.
Seconded by Representative Butler.
Seconded by Representative Butler. All in favor? Aye. He's adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Madam Administrator, do we have anything, any new business coming before us? Well, we will. More new business from our friends at the Department of Social Services. So stay tuned in October because we'll be getting together again. Okay. All right, everybody.